Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to tonight's Tuesday Committee of the Whole. It is January 21st, 2020. We do have four items on the agenda this evening. Prior to getting into the first item, which is the 2019 Public Works update, I'm just going to read a quick reminder in case there are signatures on the list, which there appears to be one. The floor is going to be open for audience members for 20 minutes. Audience members who do obtain the floor can address the City Council on matters that are specifically on this evening's agenda for the City Council. We do ask that persons wishing to address the City Council, keep their comments to five minutes in length. Comments must be addressed to the Council as a whole and through the mayor, and of course, no profanity will be accepted or used. Given that, we can go ahead and turn our attention to Director Horn for the 2019 Public Works update.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, City Council. You know, I, we had a real, I won't say difficult year, but a year filled with a lot of projects, a lot of accomplishments, and I felt it was a good time to start a tradition of my own, and that's updating the City Council of the accomplishments that occurred in the previous year. You know, we all get busy with our day-to-day activities, and we sometimes lose sight of everything that was accomplished. And so, a philosophy we have at Public Works is, from time to time, we're going to get some Ds on some assignments, and we need to learn from those, but we also have to take time to recognize the As, and that's what we're doing today. So I'll just briefly go through each division, and then I'll talk about some department accomplishments at the end, and some of what we're looking to accomplish in the next year. The first division is community development. As you all know, there's been a lot of transition in that department, a lot of positive changes, I believe. We still have changes to make and some improvements to make, but I'm very encouraged by where we're headed, the people we have in place, and the positive outlook we have, a willingness to change, a willingness to pursue doing things differently. Some of our things that we accomplished last year, we performed over 4,000 in-house inspections. We issued over 2,000 permits last week. That's almost 40 a week, last year. That's almost 40 a week. A big thing I'm proud of is the way we've started to better utilize our third-party inspection and plan review services. By using those, we're able to maintain lower permit fees for residential projects, and we can increase service levels because our inspectors are not tied up on major commercial Some of the important projects that we completed in 2019 were the comprehensive plan, as you're all aware of. We had an apartment complex that went through some significant code compliance issues. We worked with them for a long time during 2019, and were able to make many of those changes that brought that entire development up to compliance with our codes, which was very significant. We started working on our zoning code updates. Our new division had Don Wenzel incorporated a new property maintenance procedure whereby the process has increased the teamwork efforts, it's improved compliance percentages, it improves customer services, and it has reduced employee burnout because we don't have one employee handling all property maintenance issues. Some positive changes that were made at the Planning and Zoning Commission, where we developed more accurate and better information to provide the commissioners. We raised the bar, if you will, for our petitioners. We have slowed the process down a little bit to make sure that we don't run into situations where we have approvals with, you know, tons of conditions. When it gets to the City Council level, it's pretty much approved with one or two minor conditions. We've standardized the motion process for the commissioners, which has helped, and we've implemented electronic packets, and we have the packets available on the website for the residents. So that's a huge staff saving. I put this slide in here. It's not very telling right now. We have been implementing the survey, community development, customer service survey. We've been doing it for about three and a half, four months. We're not seeing the results that I'm sure you would like to see as well. They've been very positive. We just haven't gotten the numbers. So what we're going to do is, staff is looking at other ways to try and get some feedback from our applicants. Moving on to, by the way, if anyone has a question, please feel free to just interrupt me. Moving on to the utility and underground divisions, which we call them utilities, I just have to give a little kudos to both the supervisors. Historically, those two divisions have not worked well together. There's been huge wall between those two divisions. Both superintendents have worked really hard to break down those walls. As a matter of fact, Superintendent Dan Saveska, as you might have seen in your Friday report, was awarded with APWA Manager of the Year for Rights of Way in Utilities. He'll be recognized this Thursday and potentially win the award for the entire Chicago metro We have two employees that have achieved their PACP certification, which is a very important and difficult certification to get, related to our MWRD compliance. We responded to over 350 different emergency responses, whether they're water main breaks, sanitary backups, or flooding response. We've maintained over eight, or we've improved over 8,000 feet of sanitary and storm sewer. We've tested for inflow and infiltration, over 28,000 feet of piping. We are fully compliant with all mandated MWRD and IEPA programs. These include the IEPA sampling, LMO2, MWRD, LTOP reporting. These are all very complex reports that are required from these agencies. The utility division was very project-heavy. Last year, as you're all aware, with the Bond projects, we did Arbor Drive, over $700,000 worth of new water main there, and we also completed about $1.6 million worth of water main in the Waverly Park and Weber Park areas. Another huge improvement, to me, the feather in the Public Works cap this year, is our SCADA improvements. You've heard us talking about the different phases of SCADA. We implemented the major part of the SCADA in 2019, the results of which have the potential to save over $10,000 a month, just in operational costs, in telecommunications costs. Factored out, that's over $1 million in 10 years. So that's a significant savings. Going to our streets division, again, our superintendent, Bill Sucheky, was awarded Chicago Metro Manager of the Year for Transportation. Bill had probably one of the most outstanding years I've ever seen a Public Works employee had with the number of projects he did, along with all the special events he managed, and regular day-to-day maintenance, plus managing 16 or 17 employees. Doing all this while also being our number-one advocate for employee engagement and department morale. So he is absolutely an asset to the department, had a phenomenal year. Last year saw a very difficult January. If you remember, the average temperature for that month was minus 16 degrees. We had 10 snow events in 19 days that month. Some other statistics that you might be interested in, we completed, with contractual and in-house work, we completed almost 10,000 square yards of patching, asphalt patching, that improves the roadways, 2,700 square feet of sidewalk, and 1,500 feet of brand-new curb and gutter. We also trimmed 1,800 parkway trees and collected over 6,500 tons of refuse and yard waste material. The major projects that were completed last year that you might not remember, we completed the Euclid Avenue Bike Path. We completed the Barker Avenue Bridge, which included negotiating, or scheduling around the Black Party and school openings. We completed the Kirchhoff Road Resurfacing Project, which, as you remember, had two parades down it and included some special guests. That Kirchhoff Road project, it's important to let the Council know that the city saved $350,000 as part of that project, $200,000 in direct costs that the city was going to spend on median construction, and $150,000 in indirect costs on roads that we were able to pave using grant money that are actually local roads. So those are significant savings for the city. As I mentioned before, the other, you know, significant impact besides the resurfacing and reconstruction projects were the special events, of which there were 20. Yes, sir?
Director Horn, just words like the emergency snow and ice control events, is it considered an emergency if it's outside of normal business hours? Like what kinds of, like, if it's a snowfall at 3:00 a.m., that has to be cleared by 5:00, or if it's a snowfall at 2:00 in the afternoon, that's not an emergency?
All snow events are considered emergency events. It's when we put in, whether it's a Phase 1 to Phase 4 operation, it's considered an emergency event.
Thank you.
In Alderman O'Brien, obviously, Alderman Cannon has gone through the snowplow training every so often, but the same thing, we have different phases depending on how much is coming down, how many trucks need to be out there, and then what is considered. But again, anytime snow is really coming down, or ice, we're looking at is what is the issue. And, you know, something that might come up at 2:00 in the morning, the sergeant might be calling in and saying, hey, it's starting to get slippery, that's considered an emergency at that point.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to internal services, again, I have to give a kudos to our supervisor. He was promoted in 2019 to the supervisor's position. He's brought a great perspective and a new approach to operating that division. We also have had outstanding efforts by the then, the longtime foreman. It's almost like he's been reborn into that position, has done outstanding work all year long. A lot of transition in that division, but again, they continue to excel, continue to do a significant amount of work, as you can see the statistics there. Both departments continue to do unbelievable work with their capital projects. I think vehicle services, you'll find, is always at the top of the mountain when it comes to budgeting the appropriate amount and spending it right up to what was allocated. So that's all I have on the divisions. Things I wanted to talk about with the department and remind the City Council, 2019 saw a transition of not only my position, the director, but also the assistant director, Joellen Charlton, who's in the back of the room. Getting her here has been a godsend. She has been outstanding for the department. We've had two, three key retirements last year. We had four division transfers, employees that transferred divisions, and we still have two positions that are vacant. But again, feels like we're really nearing department stability with being able to accomplish the things we tell the Council we're going to. Again, the SCADA system was a huge achievement. Also, in 2019, staff secured almost $1.5 million in grant funding between Park Street Storm Sewer, the Clinton Road Bike Path, and the Community Development Black Grant. You know, people ask if it's still business as usual, and I asked an employee today if he thought it was business as usual, and he told me that everything has been changed, and if it hasn't been changed, you tried to make us change it. So that's everything from operational changes, social media, record-keeping, electronic technology-based systems. Information and data sharing was, we just didn't do that in our department, so that's changed and helped a lot. We take strategic looks at everything we do. Sometimes we can't spend as in-depth a look at it as we'd like to, just because of time, but we do try and look at everything strategically. And lastly, I won't go into all the details, but my biggest thing I'm proudest of is, and the thing we focused on most over the last year, a year and a half, is our capital planning and building what we plan and spending the dollars that are given to us by the City Council. In recent history, the average capital budget was about $9 million. The average expenditure was about 4, so about 45%. In 2019, the City Council budgeted $11.2 million. We spent almost 10. And when you include the grant funding that the city received last year, the city benefited from about $13 million worth of capital improvements last year. That is significant. We do hire engineers to help us with those things, but every project requires a liaison at staff level to get the project done. So I'm really proud of our guys for that accomplishment. I just, I'm not going to go through all the percentages, but we generally averaged about 95% of the money that was given to us to spend, with the exception of a few projects that either had to be deferred, or the City Council asked us to defer. So with that, we have capital projects for 2020. Just wanted to give you guys all a snapshot. We have a very busy year again next year, which will include the completion of the Bond projects, a new sewer project, again, a reconstruction and resurfacing project, the Arbor Drive resurfacing project, Park Street Storm Sewer, among a variety of other projects. Some major initiatives we have for next year will include continuing the SCADA upgrades, the work orders, and enter gov modules of the ERP system will be significant. We want to make improvements to our social media presence. We need to develop a risk and resiliency plan, zoning code and sign code updates, fee schedule updates, and last, and maybe most importantly, we want to bring back Public Works Open House. We want to do that in May in conjunction with Public Works Week. What's that?
Saturday hours.
Yes. One of the things you'll see on the, and I provided you all the list, if you want to look through it later and have questions about it, let me know. But we do want to try and implement some enforcement and some Saturday customer service inspections that, I think we talked about rental inspections wanting on Saturday, so we do want to implement that this year as well. Again, this was just my opportunity to remind the Council of what was completed in 2019. Those accomplishments are a testament to the City Council and City Manager's support and mayor's support, but it's also a testament to the hard work and dedication of our Public Works staff. In Public Works, we talk about getting things done for the residents, and we did that last year. Do I have any questions?
Thank you. Are there any questions or clarifications needed by Council? Alderman Cannon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Sure.
I was wondering, Mr. Horn, if you could update us. I noticed in the last published schedule that the ERP system now is going to push back till 2021. I know we had a change of personnel, but is that going to cost us more money?
So that's number three, and right now, we're on schedule what was budgeted. So we're on schedule and on budget.
I thought it was supposed to be done this year.
We had, but with changing of staff and some of the other pieces, we had a little delay on what we were trying to do. So number three, when we get into that, I will explain a lot more of that.
Okay. I guess one of the other questions, and this is not a big thing, but it's a small one because I know you highlighted it. You know, we repaired all of our hydrants and stuff, I think, in October, November. Since those things are leaking, you know, the ones that were leaking, why can't we do that earlier in the year? Because I'm guessing those leaks develop over the winter, right?
So generally, the leaks develop after our flushing program, and what we do is we train seasonal employees to do our hydrant flushing and do the maintenance on them. When they notice problems, they write those down. So after the summer, our staff comes and tries to fix them.
Thank you.
Yep.
And again, the Council's been very good about allowing us to do leak detection annually. We do find something, and we have to do it because we are a user of Lake Michigan water. But last year was roughly about 17, but you are correct, we do find a hydrant or two, and we used to have some private hydrants that were in the city, and those have all been replaced or removed.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
And Director Horn, don't go too far, though, because we do have the Complete Streets and Policy presentation, and I don't know if you're going to need to chime in on that if there aren't any more questions here.
Stay for moral support.
And then, when Joellen's ready to present on that, you can take the floor.
I will do that. Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'm here to talk to you tonight about the, your consideration to adopt a complete streets policy for the city of Rolling Meadows. And I do have a PowerPoint presentation that will come up shortly. Go ahead and advance. So I am going to be very brief about this. I did provide a lot of information in the packet. I'm going to talk a little bit about what it is, why we're doing it, what some of the major components are of the Complete Streets program. So basically, the Complete Streets program definition, or what it is, is a community's intent to plan and design streets, rights of way for people, all different types of people, from different backgrounds, different income levels, different ages, different ethnic backgrounds, and to plan it so that you don't need to necessarily rely on a car. So we're going to look at pedestrians, we're going to look at bikes, we're going to make sure underserved, underrepresented populations have access to transportation if they don't have access to a car or an automobile. So the goal is that the rights of way accommodate everyone. So that's the what. And basically, in that previous picture, that is Algonquin Road in Rolling Meadows, and you can see that we're accommodating cars. We do have sidewalks in along a good portion of that road. Some areas do not have sidewalks. So that's a look. Some of the things that we could be looking at without going, you know, all the way, sometimes people think complete streets is our streets with a lot of bike lanes on them. That's not necessarily the only thing that we do with complete streets. You can look at ways to improve the pedestrian experience with better lighting, better landscaping, separating the cars from the pedestrians, tightening things up a little bit. It might make the lanes a little bit narrower, but keep in mind, when you have narrower lanes, it makes it easier for the pedestrians to get across six lanes of traffic. The picture on the bottom shows some additional improvements in that particular right-of-way, including improvements for bus stops and other types of improvements. Why we do it, there's two reasons, and the first reasons are shown on this, and I know some people look at this, and Rob looked at it this afternoon, and I heard him chuckle all the way down the hall. But this, these types of designs exist out there, and it's really sad when you see somebody struggling to utilize a bus stop when they had to walk on the grass or not have a way to get there. Or the upper-right picture where a pedestrian is literally crossing traffic in the middle of the street, or where you have handicapped people utilizing the street or the right-of-way in an obviously unsafe condition. So it's a moral responsibility, I think, for people to plan rights-of-way so that they're accessible by all people. That's the first part of the why. Probably a more important part of the why for many people is money. So our city engineers from Christopher Burke Engineering are recommending that we adopt this policy. They have been involved for a number of years preparing our grant applications for SGP funding that is scored and recommended by the Northwest Municipal Conference. This year, the Northwest Municipal Conference announced that they're going to be adding up to 50 additional points for applications that have an adopted Complete Streets policy and for projects that show implementation strategies of that policy. So the bottom line is, if every community in the area is adopting a Complete Street policy, you're going to be 30 points behind if you don't adopt that policy, because of that 50 points, 30 points will be available if you just adopt the policy. The remaining 20 points are there based on the project that you're submitting and the way in which it addresses the policy. I went into a lot of detail in the report about the components of a Complete Street policy, according to Smart Growth America, and the Northwest Municipal Conference has indicated that they're going to rely on that model for evaluations of the policy. So we need to adopt a policy sometime prior to the application deadline, which is March. So that's why we're talking to you in January. Hopefully, we'll bring this back to you at the next meeting for consideration. Again, as I mentioned before, the expectation is not that every complete street that we do in town will look like that picture on the right. Rather, what it requires is that we give thoughtful consideration to whether or not any components of the Complete Street philosophy apply to each of the projects that are being forwarded for consideration. So again, there was a lot of detail provided in the report. I'm happy to go through any of those at the end if there's any specific questions. I think one of the biggest questions I've heard, I've given this presentation in a prior community, and most of the elected officials are mostly concerned about, is it binding? You know, if we adopt this policy, are we bound to spend a lot of additional money on these improvements? And again, really, the policy is set up to require that you spend time considering what those improvements should be. The policy does allow for exclusions from needing to be considered. Those include things like limited access roads. You can include provisions where if the costs are excessively disproportionate to the need, you can exclude those. If you don't have those improvements in any adopted plan, so if our comprehensive plan or our bicycle plan doesn't identify that as a meaningful connection, then we wouldn't need to look at bikeway improvements there, but we might want to look at making our ADA accessible requirements, or maybe it's along a bus route. So we want to provide meaningful connections to the bus route or bus shelters. What it does require, again, is that we incorporate some type of public process. So the policy includes utilizing our infrastructure committee that we already have in Rolling Meadows to advise and give us feedback on some of these recommendations that would be forwarded to council. And then as the council is awarding a contract, we would just go through a process in the staff report and possibly the resolution authorizing the contract that notices that we did include public participation and have the findings on why it's not applicable in this particular case. I put these draft resurfacing and reconstruction projects up for your review in graphic form. These are the first projects that we're likely to see if we adopt the complete street policy. We have been going through a process to identify which roadways and rights-of-way are eligible and should be coming to you in the next four years for both resurfacing and reconstruction. So I did want to throw those up to kind of give you a visual representation of not only where the projects are, but in which years the projects would be coming through. So these show, I think, 2020 through 2024 for both the resurfacing, and then these are the reconstruction projects proposed in the same time period. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have on adopting a complete street policy. And Rob is here to answer any specific questions about roadways.
Thank you. Are there specific questions from the council? Alderman Sanoco.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you Assistant Director for putting together this policy. I was at the Bicycle and Pedestrian Committee with Northwest Municipal Conference earlier today to discuss this policy and spoke with one of the city officials from Evanston, because I was not necessarily concerned, but I wanted us to consider the language that, at this point, the policy is quite open as to what we consider to be a substantial financial hardship. And the Evanston Complete Streets Policy, which was voted the second best in Illinois by the same organization that was referenced here, actually has some more specific information regarding what financial hardship would be, and they use the minimum of twenty percent of the total project cost. So I think I would request that we consider those parameters to be a little bit more specific in our own policy as well, to ensure that going forward, if the council is considering whether or not to not pursue a complete streets policy for our own projects, that we have very clear guidelines as to what that is or isn't.
Thank you. Any follow-up or feedback from that?
Well, that's, you know, that is kind of that next step. It does require you to spend a little bit more time and deliberate whether or not you're going to tie not funding a project or not funding complete streets elements, you know, to something that's a little bit more restrictive if people want to save money or say no. But that's a policy decision of the council. So I would be very interested in whether or not that's something we should revise in our draft for your consideration at the next meeting.
I would like to clarify, Assistant Director, that I am very much in favor of as many complete streets as possible, and my fear is that we might have a council in the future that would not have that as a goal. So I'm looking at this policy as being very pro-complete streets in favor of pedestrian and cycling. And so I want to make sure that the financial hardship that we're referencing truly is a financial hardship, and it looks like comparable cities have that twenty percent, or in the event of no more than a million dollars per project.
That's right.
And then my second question regarding our policy is how this would apply to, how it would apply to PUDs or public unit planning.
Planned unit development.
Thank you, thank you, yes.
Existing planned unit developments that have already been approved would still be subject to whatever approvals are regulating that development. New planned unit developments would presumably, if this is passed, we would modify our zoning code to require these elements be incorporated into new things. Going back to the first scenario where if it's existing, and Rob and I have talked about this a lot, you know, if we have somebody coming through with a modification request for new signage, for example, we would use that opportunity to open up. You know, anytime you open up the planned development for reconsideration, you can also open up other elements. So that would be an opportunity to see if it makes sense to add other components and add those requirements as a condition of some of the other things that they want in the amendment to the planned development.
So I have a number of those planned unit developments within Ward Seven. I'm thinking of Oaksbury and Creekside and Fairfax, and none of those, for example, have sidewalks. And I know a couple of these communities are looking for resurfacing projects. Would this policy, if adopted, then provide more resources? Or a toolkit perhaps, if they were to resurface?
Not, usually, I mean, it depends. There's a lot of things that you would have to look into. Again, it's part of that thoughtful consideration. If it's within the right-of-way and within our control, certainly there are things that could be considered if there's room, you know. Then if there's not room, you're looking at property acquisition and adding to the twenty percent cost and some other things. If it's private, if it's on private streets and regulated by the planned development by their approval, you know, that probably wouldn't be as applicable. We wouldn't be as, it wouldn't be as easy to go in and make those changes if it's private improvements as opposed to public improvements.
Okay.
Well, then I guess my follow-up is, if there's a way that, as a council, then we could have a policy that would encourage that the complete streets policy be applied to these planned unit developments as well, because I think that going forward, we have another planned unit development over in the old Dominic's property as well, and I would like our policy to be implemented in those areas as well.
Thank you. Saying that if the council was going to go ahead and authorize staff to continue with this planned development, in one of your prior slides, you showed a timeline of certain areas for the city which construction was going to take place. When you look at those areas and if you were going to do something comprehensive like this to improve the walkways, who performs or provides the analysis for the density of traffic or pedestrian traffic, or what type of needs are clear and present in order to incorporate that into the projects? Who does that analysis?
So the city engineer, we go through a process of evaluating the projects that are up for resurfacing or reconstruction with both staff and the committee, I believe, is also involved in that, in that early decision. A adoption of this policy would just change the way we're thinking about it. Are we considering all of the other components? And rather than just resurfacing or reconstructing the street, are there other components that are applicable? And we would look at it at that time.
Agreed. And with those considerations, just making sure that we, when we're taking those factors into consideration, that we are current with what type of needs are required to be met? How many pedestrians versus how many people have cars versus bicycles or whatever?
Right. And we'll be at an advantage, you know, we'll have the census data coming out shortly, you know, not this coming year, and probably not even the next year, but in 2022, the underserved population, some of the income data will become very helpful to guide us in how we evaluate what improvements might be needed.
Correct. Yeah, if we do move forward with this, hopefully by the time census data is back, we'll be getting on with those targeted construction dates.
And I would also remind people that one thing that we do look is that we're still on our ADA track, because we did the study and we have to complete all of our sidewalks if you want to consider the ones that need to be done. So that goes into the factors when we decide on some of the things that we need to do, because ADA needs to be completed by time-sensitive dates.
Sure. Director Horn?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I just, two things that Alderman Sanoco brought up that I want to make sure she's aware of. The first thing is the points that are scored. I was on the subcommittee that put together the scoring system for the, for the, in regard to the CMAP, the new CMAP regulations, and we made it a specific point that you couldn't just adopt a policy and not implement any of the improvements. So you are going to, there's a certain amount of points you get for just adopting the policy, then there's a certain amount of points you get for actually implementing what you've adopted. The other thing I would, the city council hasn't been made aware of this, but at the capital improvement committee level, we are working with them on developing what we call guiding, change, controlling principles, so we can incorporate some of what this policy will say into our controlling principles, and those are the things that help us make decisions for the capital improvements that are adopted by the city council. So we will have council direction as to whether we widen a road, say, or whether we put a sidewalk on a roadway that doesn't currently. We can create those guiding principles that are directed through the city council.
So if I get a fitness pass, I have to exercise, is what you're saying?
You don't have to. I'm not going to get the points.
Alderman Cannon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just, Alderman Sanoco, just so you know, some of those roadways that you were talking about over in your ward are HOAs also. We don't have anything to do with the resurfacing. Also, I guess the question I have is, I don't disagree with trying to just implement some of these things. The fear I have, you know, there's some streets in my ward that haven't been touched for thirty years. You know, if we start spending twenty percent more on given projects right now, does that set those roadways back even farther? I mean, because, you know, we have limited dollars. I mean, obviously, some of these design features would really be nice in some areas. I think anybody would say it'd be crazy not to, but I mean, we have cost factors. I mean, we have, parts of the city have no streetlights. And are we going to start redoing streetlights in other areas and not even have streetlights in some other areas? So I guess, you know, there's, there's trade-offs we have to, and I'm just worried that, you know, we adopt a program like this, and all of a sudden our costs go up significantly. That means we're going to do less roadways.
I think this policy gives you a place to jump off and get started. And as Rob mentioned, you will be in a position to prioritize what you want to do in certain parts of the community. So lighting is a great example, you know, would we, maybe we'd do a lighting project, but it would be, you know, on a busier street and not a more localized street. So I think, to answer your question directly, yes, you, if you're putting more money into projects to address certain components, I think the fear that we're going to, you know, like increasing by twenty percent, I don't think you have to do that. I think there are components that you can do that address significant issues for people that don't have to cost a lot of money, and those are the ones that we can prioritize and still stay on track for accomplishing your goals.
Okay, because like one of the projects, you know, two or three years ago, we actually approved engineering, and it was all engineered on Plum Grove Road with streetlights, and then they pulled the funding from us. So I mean, that would be an easy project on a main road. You know, I'd like to see that done before we do some other lighting thing, just because there's no lights out there right now. And then I guess, you know, there's, again, I just go back to these roads that haven't been touched for years, and I just, I get worried that all of a sudden we're going to get pushed off on that, and that would be unfortunate for the people who are putting up with some really tough roads out in my area.
I would just add that we're, you almost have to put the roadways in separate categories. A lot of the roadways you're talking about, the basically the resurfaces and the reconstructs that we do annually, we're already implementing some of the things we're adopting through this just normally. We update all our handicap ramps to current codes, we restripe our crosswalks, we put new signage in so it meets a retroreflectivity requirement, we repair sidewalks. All those things are things we are just now putting in the policy to look at. The bigger picture things are if we were to resurface, say, Campbell the entire way. Well, we want to look at that a little closer than we say look at Sigwalt or Owl. Same thing with big projects that we're looking for federal funding on. That's the stuff we need to be a little more critical and a little bit more willing to, you know, for example, on Kirsch Offroad, we received 2.2 million dollars and we were spending four. Well, maybe we're going to spend seven or eight, and we're going to make a lot of the improvements, but that's for those, those big-ticket projects that generally we're going to be looking for funding on.
And Alderman Cannon, we do a lot with landscaping, as you know, with trees, so we do get those points at that point in time, because greening of an area, not just making it look different, goes a long way, too.
Okay. So like, you know, you had that picture here on Roosevelt Road, which I'm very familiar with. My sister used to, my sister used to work on one of those buildings. But the reason I bring it up is like, so when they made that redesign, because that was an old traditional street a few years ago, so is that part of the engineering team that does that, or do we have to hire a design architect for that?
That was part of the engineering. Actually, Chris Burke did that engineering design for the one in Forest Park.
So they have like a designer that does that, or, okay. Okay, thanks.
Tangentially, though, when we adopt these, these complete street policies, does that open up opportunity for grants in any way to help offset costs for incorporation?
Yes. Especially if you're doing walkways and medians.
One of the really, just to hit your point a little harder, is the state of Illinois is looking at phase, asking us to provide them with phase one feedback on their bridge project for Route 53. So they're looking to redo all of the bridges in Rolling Meadows. So if you have a complete streets policy and you need your, either your existing conditions or your long-range plans show pedestrian connections, they're almost obligated to provide those and fund those at their levels where they wouldn't be if you didn't have a complete street policy.
So it's definitely to our advantage to pursue these policies.
Absolutely.
I agree with that. Alderman Veniziano.
So to circle back, at the beginning, you said that there's this point system, and the deadline is March?
Fifteenth.
March fifteenth. So that deadline is to have this policy in place. Are we allowed to then, after that deadline, continue to modify this policy?
I think it's a living, breathing, you know, thing. I think when the Improvement Committee gets together and starts talking about how we want to prioritize things or how we want to publicize, how are we going to use the census data, how are we going to incorporate public comments into our process? I think we've got some bones in the draft document that we have, but if at any point you want to revise it, I know many communities that have had them in place for several years continue to modify them.
So we just need to have the core policy in place in order to qualify for those point systems?
Yes.
Okay.
Alderman Diazis.
Thank you. I guess it's kind of a two-part question. I like what I'm hearing. My first question is, are the additional engineering costs a part of this percentage? Like Mr. Cannon was saying about the design and whatnot, is that a part of this percentage? And the follow-up to that is, is the twenty percent a fixed number, or should it be ten or should it be thirty? And what have other cities, communities in the area have done?
So your first part is engineering typically takes care of that, and I think, not putting words into your mouth, but the twenty percent is more of a guideline for different opportunities. So again, engineers usually put this in, and they're already doing some of that as we design some of our streets, so it doesn't have a big flux of twenty percent over, but it's really a guideline when you talk about those numbers.
A lot of these plans are already, they're kind of ready-made. You know, back when Forest Park did Roosevelt Road, it was kind of a new thing, so they paid Chris Burke to provide some design concepts so that everybody would understand and get on board.
I just want to make sure I understand, so on a million-dollar project, adopting this could make the project a million, too? Potentially. It may not, but it could.
No, because typically, if we're calling it a million-dollar project, that's all-in, so we're not adding more into the project.
Okay.
And again, it goes back to when we do most of our streets, we have the engineer do it all in, so when we give you that number, that's all the new number. So this, again, twenty percent or that guideline is really, some of that we're already doing. It's just if you want to make, going back into when we were talking about medians and everything else like that, if you want to do something that's completely different from what we typically have done, that will increase the amount.
Okay. And if I may, one final question. This is for public roadways, not private, because I know some areas in the city are private and they take care of their own stuff. So this, does this apply to them?
So this only applies to City of Rolling Meadows roads. And again, if you're private, and as was mentioned before, if you're an HOA or you have a PUD that's in place right now, you really can't touch it until they come back potentially to the city and they're asking. And then once an ask is made and we're opening that discussion, that's when we would be putting that in.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Alderman Budmats.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, the policy
Um, will the policy have in, within it the parameters around exceptions to the policy and who's entitled to make those and, and what the mechanism will be for determining those exceptions?
Yes. Um, that is in the draft policy on...
I think it talks about the guidelines and flexibility.
Item number four, exceptions to the policy. So that, would you like me to go through them really quickly?
Sure.
Um, so limited access roadway, so Route 53 would be excluded. Where the cost of the facility or accommodation for a specific mode is excessively disproportionate to the need or probable use expected. A documented absence of any planning that calls for certain types of improvement, so it doesn't show up in our comp plan or the bike plan. Emergency repairs can be excluded. So if we need to go in and make a lot of roadway repairs on an emergency basis, those can be excluded. And any project that was initiated prior to the adoption of the policy. Those are the ones that are drafted in currently.
And I think we just heard hardship and so...
But then if for some reason that the council or the city manager or somebody determines that, that for some reason this street shouldn't have this, I mean, what's the mechanism for that? If it doesn't fall into those four guidelines, there is none? We're just, we adopt it and we do it no matter what?
Uh, the council has the ultimate authority. So if you need to modify the policy because you're not doing anything related to a complete street, that option is out there. I look at all of the streets that we have in Rolling Meadows and, you know, even though we might not be where we want to be, we, we, many of our streets have sidewalks, many of our streets have accessible crossings, many of our streets have had greening projects. So I, I can't imagine a project where we couldn't say that we're making certain improvements based on the complete street policy that would not comply with this section.
Okay. And then, for example, Euclid, Palatine has a complete streets. Does Arlington Heights have one?
Yes.
So, so right now, if they wanted to redesign, are we holding them back from being able to redesign a complete street if we don't have that policy so that we're working in conjunction with them?
We can, I mean, I'm not sure I understand your question. You don't have to have a policy to work together.
So if we're, if we're, if we're going into, trying to get a grant together or doing a project together, yes, we would negatively impact a partner project by not. As, as Joellen said earlier, any project, if we don't adopt this, any project we put our name on for a potential grant, we're down 30 points just as soon as we submit it. We're behind everyone else by 30 points.
So your answer is also typically we have the IGA between Arlington Heights and us. And then when we do the IGA, we typically choose those standards that we're going to be doing. So use Algonquin Road, when we did light program, that was everybody using the same standard. So if we create an IGA, we're all going to be on the same standard. So we might have our own complete street ideas, they might have, but no matter what, when that engineering, it's going to be one universal, uniform idea. But then we're both showing them that we both have a program.
Okay.
Further comments or clarification from this Alderman Sonica?
I just wanna clarify as well that Alderman Cannon mentioned if we have an HOA that they wouldn't necessarily fall under this policy or that the city wouldn't resurface. And I just wanted to clarify with city staff that if, if an HOA approaches us to work on a road project, that the city will engage.
So right now, HOAs, if they come in and they're doing a resurfacing, they don't need anything from the city other than going through the permit process. But if they are going to be doing a widening or if they're going to be getting into an easement or something else, that would trigger this program per se. But again, if they're, so what you said with Creekside, Creekside, if they're coming in and about every year they do one or two streets or whatever it is, that's just a resurfacing. So it would not trigger this program for them at that point with no sidewalks and all those. And again, if they do their program where they are widening, where they're doing some other things, then it would trigger. But again, it's how much are they doing? A PUD, if they're coming in and they want to redo the entire PUD or they have a new section that they want to do, that's going to trigger the whole PUD that we have a bite at the apple.
I would just, one thing to note is generally we don't have those discussions if they were to want to do that. We have a set standard that we have to meet through a grant that a homeowners association doesn't have to meet, which means their costs are generally much less than ours. So we don't kind of mix the two kind of contractors. We wouldn't try to partner up on anything like that. We usually only do a partnership with another public agency because they have to meet those minimum requirements.
Thank you for that clarification.
Okay. All right. If there aren't any further comments or clarification necessary, I know staff is looking for consensus from the council. I think if we do get a consensus, maybe have a little bit tighter language coming back to the council about PUDs and what triggers involvement with HOAs and PUDs to that regard. So with that, I would like to see a show of hands for those in favor for staff to continue and finalize a draft for this complete streets policy. All those in favor, raise your hands. Two, three, four, five, six. Alderman Budmats, that says yes?
Yeah, I was.
Okay. Then it's seven, it's unanimous.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. And then it'll bring us on to the next item here, the ERP update and next steps. It says to defer to Melissa Gallagher. Ms. Gallagher, I hope you're coming up. Last time it said defer to Rob and it ended up being Joellen. And so I called Rob here for no reason.
Yeah, he was already here. And Waseem is also here, so.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and city council. Tonight, we would like to give you an update to the city's enterprise resource planning software project update. And we're gonna give you sort of a, for those who've been on the council for a while, this will be some old news, but we are gonna give some new news as well. So we're giving an overall update and then also our IT coordinator, Waseem Khan, is also going to be up here as well. And to kick things off, we wanted to just go through a PowerPoint presentation. Some of this is in your council packet and then of course we'll take any questions as well. So to start from square one, what we wanted to, to kind of bridge on and Director Horn also had mentioned this about strategic thinking. And I think an ERP really does that for us. Info and data sharing is such a key element to what we're doing here as well and an overarching goal of trying to visualize our data and keep it current. So what we're trying to do, and you'll see this in our weekly notes too, when we write our weekly notes, we do try to keep as much updated in there so you know what is happening on a weekly basis. But to start from square one, what is an ERP? So an enterprise resource planning system software basically connects all of your databases so that they can kind of speak with one another. But it's really the people that are using the software that are trying to enhance the communication. And basically we've got our core foundation, which is our financials, our general ledger, our budget, capital, and all the things that feed into our audit and our annual budget and capital plan. We have human resources and payroll, accounts receivable, accounts payable, purchase orders, cash register, anything that takes in payments, credit card, payments, online software, utility billing as well, and then business licensing, permitting, work orders, parking tickets, you name it, we're doing it right now for, for, for all our city software. And if you can think of your own software updates that you've done in your home, there's a lot of updating that you do and then things that happen afterwards too, you're continually updating and tweaking as you're going along. Our overall goal right now, and we've been working on this for some time now, is to update our outdated software platforms. We've got a lot of compartmentalized software. We've got a lot of databases. You think about all the paperwork, years and years of data, duplicative data sources, and then also lots of different spreadsheets that we all maintain. And what we're trying to do is bring this into one comprehensive system that all our employees can use and then overall enhance for our residents' services overall. So when things are, are housed in different areas and, and multiple areas, that it just makes it more difficult. To give you an example, a paper process such as a, a purchase order that was written on a, a purchase order, it might've been entered into a spreadsheet. We now have that in our system as a workflow, an electronic workflow, so that a supervisor can end, at the end, turn that into a purchase order from a requisition where it used to be a paper tracking mechanism. Our A number one goal for the project is to improve our services to our residents. And I would also say our business partners as well. We want to try to consolidate as many systems and processes as possible. We want to try to gain the ability to enhance our reporting. We have lots of agencies and outside entities that we must report to. And then our internal reporting and, and data management. The overall goal to this as well is to make sure that all our GIS, our geographic information systems is all tied to everything as well. Everything is driven by our addresses. And the more that we can do to tie everything together, the better off we are. Back in 2017, the city has selected two partners in this project, two our vendors. By resolution, we have an agreement with Tyler Technologies to do the entire software update and that is the vendor that is our, our software provider. And then we have a professional services agreement with Baker Tilly. And Baker Tilly is the outside professional that helps us with all our project documentation and helps us with continuous improvements as well. Just recently, this past week, what they did is facilitated a process or a meeting to help us with our work order and utility modules. And they basically mapped out and did some conversion mapping for us and a lot of as-is-to-be discussions. It's a multi-phase, multi-year project and I think that's really important to remember that these things do take time. There's a lot of complex integrations, in particular with our GIS databases. What we wanted to do tonight is give you sort of an overall update. And now that we have our city's new IT coordinator, Waseem Khan, he is the overarching project coordinator. And we have actually, since you've been here, gone through several updates with our current software. So Tyler, just to give you a little background on Tyler, Tyler Technologies is one of the premier governmental finance software providers out there. When you speak with local municipalities, you know that Tyler is one of those resources that have grown with municipalities over time, not only municipalities, but also school districts and park districts. And so even though we've actually implemented Tyler's in 2018, they've also stayed up to date with their, their maintenance and their upgrades. And I want to turn it over to Waseem to talk a little bit about some of those upgrades that have been going on and our GIS and the current timeline. Waseem?
Thank you, Melissa. Good evening, today council members. My name is Waseem Khan of his city AT coordinator. I'm going to be going over the ERP phase summary for the project that we have going on right now. Starting with the GIS standardization, we are working with our GIS consultants, MGP, our city staff and Tyler Technologies to build the address integration for the ERP system. This is a huge undertaking that we're doing cause it ties in with pretty much every single module that is used in the ERP system. As Melissa mentioned, everything is address-driven, so having our GIS system tie in with that is critical. After that, we did successfully implement our financial software, which included our general ledger, financial reporting, budget, accounts payable, requisition POs, AR, and all of those modules are currently running in all city departments right now successfully. As far as the timeline goes, this was included in your packet, but I'll just go through it briefly. As I just stated, phase one was the financials because that's the foundation that most software rely on because that's what attracts all the money that comes in and out of the system. That we went live with on April 2018. Phase two includes our work order GIS inventory system, which we went to with a soft live in October 2019. So we're using that right now live with our public works and community development systems. Phase three includes our adjudication hearings and parking tickets, which we are going to go with a soft live, actually this Thursday, the 23rd. Phase four is our utility billing, GIS and online payment and evos, which we will be going live May of this year. Phase five includes our payroll and HR, which we will start in 2021. And then to close it out, we'll be doing our permitting and licensing, which once again, we actually had our kickoff training today with Tyler. They're on site, they'll be here today, tomorrow and Thursday, and that is going to be going live in 2021. As stated, the work orders, under the direction of Director Ward, Rob Horn, we have been working with Tyler and we did go through a soft live in October. It's going pretty well right now. There are some kinks that are working out, but it's a work in progress. We are running that in parallel with our current paper system as well, just to make sure all the kinks are worked out. As I stated, the adjudication, we are going with DACRA. That's going to be going live later on in spring 2020. As I stated, we are going with a soft live this Thursday, the 23rd. For utility billing, once again, the city bills approximately 7,000 utility billing accounts on a monthly basis, which include water, sewers, stormwater and refuse. And this upgrade enhances our billing system from the bottom up where we have utility bill invoices, collection, shutout processes, provides full integration with our GIS data and enhances our payments and bill options through our coming soon Citizen Self online portal, which will be a tremendous benefit to our community. Our Tyler cashiering and the Citizen Self portal, once again, will be going live towards the spring of 2020 as well.
Thank you, Waseem. And, you know, I really just wanted to say a big thank you to Waseem and his team. Takes a lot to step in and keep the ball rolling. And I think to Alderman Cannon's question earlier in the evening, timelines do get adjusted and just because of staffing changes. And now that Waseem is on board, it's been going full forward. So just wanted to say big thank you to his team. What we're trying to do with utility billing, we're going live in May, so just around the corner. But we have a whole informational marketing plan for utility billing to make sure that residents and businesses are informed of the changes. And so tonight, we're kicking off just as a general overview. But we will be, we'll be back February, March and April at the committee, the whole meeting, just to inform residents and then the city council of the changes for the utility bill, the online payment platform and other changes and enhancements. We are going to have an insert for the February 1st bills. And so within that insert, there'll be an auto pay informational insert so that it just informs customers of the changes and the dates. I think it's really important that we also make sure that we're updating our social media platforms, which we are, and our website, and then also in the front counter as well. And whenever we have an interaction with a resident, we're just making sure that we're letting them know. These are nice changes that are coming forward. There are new ways to pay, there are new ways to see your bill electronically, you can also see your usage history. And so there are lots of service enhancements that we want to make sure that we're sharing with residents. In addition to that, we're gonna have a March special mailing for residents. And so it's gonna be separate from your utility bill, but it's gonna be a direct mailing to all our utility bill residents. And then we're also gonna include US Census information in that as well. We will also not forget our apartments and condos, so we'll also take care of a, a different type of mailer for them as well. Even though that they are not direct mailed to those residents, the management associations also receive utility bills, we'll make sure they're covered as well. We are also including news and views articles and then update the website wherever we can. And then we're asking the city council also, if you need special information or information for your residents, just let us know in finance because we'd like to get out as much information as possible. We're very excited about utility billing. This has been one of the, one of those modules to the point, of course, we had to push it back just a little bit because of the go-live date. We originally had one a little bit, a couple months back. They actually had to push it back, so Tyler Technologies had to because they were not ready to go on their side. And that does not add anything to our budget. So to the point of, while we have to push go-live dates from time to time, that does not any, add any cost to our overall budget, just so you know. So coming up, we've got some more phases, lots to come. For ERP phases that are coming up, we've got capital assets and project code accounting. A lot of that is through the auditors in terms of they have to look at a lot of those pieces and we'll get that going at some time towards the end of 2020. Director Horn mentioned permits and licensing, that's called the EnerGov module, part of Munis Tyler, and that is being built out right now, takes about a 12-month build. And then we have human resources payroll and it takes about a 12-month build. Now, some of that has already taken place because we had to actually set up a lot of the codes and a lot of integrations through the financials. So we actually started some of that work in 2018 and 2019. And we are actually gonna probably start the real build to that, the software development in 2020 to complete in 2021. Project budget and cost update, it's really important to make sure that we document this. Tyler Munis contract was approximately 825,000 for the entire cost of the project. We're about a third of the way done through the costs and we are on track with that budget. We also have that services, professional services agreement with Baker Tilly. We're about a third of the way done with them as well and their budget was 125,000. So we are on track with the budget and the overall picture. So we are on track with the budget and the overall picture. So really, tonight, we just wanted to kick it off, inform you where we're at, keep you posted through the weekly notes process as well. Just remember, we try to put as much in the Finance weekly notes, we're always available for questions. There are lots of integrations that are happening, and it's a very exciting time, especially with the GIS connection and the data visualization. And now that Wes Seem is on board with the IT coordinator position, so we're really excited. We're excited to actually get the utility billing information out to residents. So look, in the February 1 bill, you'll see an informational insert just for the auto draft payments. So just to frame a reference on that, years ago, we were about 15% to about 18% of folks who paid online and auto pay. We're at about 30% now, auto draft. That means that in the one month, the 20th of the day in the month, they are auto draft their bill payment. That's a significant achievement for the city. We're at about 50% to 60% of our residents do pay electronically, so that's the focus of what we're trying to do, is encourage more options, more ways to pay online, and make sure that that's very convenient to folks as well. So we're excited to roll those changes out soon, and just stay tuned.
Thank you, Melissa. Thank you, Wes Seem, for that. The update was pretty comprehensive, but is there questions or clarifications?
Just one question. Along with each, with the modules as we're putting them up, are we also getting reporting done at the same time, or is all the reporting going to be after we have all the different integrated modules together?
So reporting in terms of financial reporting, or in terms of...
Not only financial reporting, but let's say, if we want to run something that says, this is how many permits, and this is the average amount of time it's taking to process these things, stuff, you know, just whatever report...
Both systems are still being run. So we still run our legacy system, as it's called, our old system, where we make sure that those reports are done. In our new system, as it's being built, we test. There's a lot of testing that's going on. There's a lot of data, that's parallel data all the way through. But to your point, we do still do all the processes that we do, all the work is still being done, all the, when we think about permitting and licensing, all of that data still sits there. There'll be more functionality as we move forward, but to your point, in a nutshell, the reporting still goes on in our old system, and it's being built in the new system.
So, let me just take one quick question. So each of the modules do report more information back, so that's how we're doing. So going back into the soft that you just heard, so there was a period of time when Northwest Central is deciding what format they wanted to do, everybody really chose DACRA, that's what we're doing, that's what's being integrated into our thing. So part of the DACRA integration is also going into our adjudication. So instead of an individual always writing all the letters, typing it all up, the system is smart enough, once PD puts in the ticket, that it's generating those letters on its own. So there's more stuff, more efficiencies coming out of that. And then that tracking right now, which is really more of an access program, it's all done through that DACRA, then inputted into our Tyler Munis. So then we have more reports about the history, pulling it up right now with our access program. It's not the easiest to bring up some of that history. So each module has more functionality, has more reporting. So when you get to 2021, 2022, when that licensing and permits are, it will provide more information to community and development. It does track it right now. If you're looking for information, it's not the easiest way to find it, and who's looking that up, and how you're doing some of these productions. But once that module is in, more people have functionality. I'll give you another example really quickly. If a person's coming in for a transfer tax right now, you have to ask Finance, you have to have community and development, you have to ask administration, then you have to also go into the adjudication to actually look up that address, make sure that they don't owe us any money, make sure that there's nothing out there. Once ERP is done, you type in that address, it will all be in there that everybody has. So when we talk about legacy stuff, we have an Excel over here, we have an Excel over here, so all these things are functionally in there. And we talk about ongoing, and that's very important in a GIS, is that some places put street spelled out, some put ST, some people just put S. That's why you keep on refining this, and that's why GIS is implemented in there, because it should be one database, one overall. And that's also what you heard, once Wes Seem got here, and I know that Rob's going to chuckle behind me, is that the work order program, it was really released, but now it's being refined. Because now that they've been able to utilize it for a little bit, there are tweaks that Wes Seem looked at, there's also things that the guys in the field, specifically utilities, came up with, and Rob. And that's the time to do it, because you want the module up and running, but you also want to make sure those tweaks are going on. You do not want to do what we had with one of our legacies, that we had this patch, that patch, that patch, and that's what's happening right now. It's so hard getting some of these patches really into Tyler, because you don't want to lose all that information. And that's why Wes Seem spends a lot of time with the rest of IT, spending a lot of time with making sure that flow works.
Okay. The point of my question was primarily that, I've done several implementations with some companies that are larger than our city. And one of the things that I've seen happen at times is that with the effort to implement all the modules and everything, you may hear the term, well, what do we have to have, and what's a nice to have type of thing? And sometimes reporting that you really should be thinking about while you're implementing winds up on the backend, and then you wind up not having the data points in the system that you want, that you're putting in, to be able to generate whatever reporting you might want to, custom reporting you may want to have. So that's why I was asking if we're simultaneously looking at what type of reporting do we want to have, and making sure that those data points are in the system at this time.
Yeah, that is definitely part of the process. When we sit down with our implementation consultants, they go through our process workflow with how the database should be designed, and obviously your end product is what you want to work backwards from. So the reports that you want is how you build your database and your form. So the more data we enter into the system, the more modules we bring online, the more interface we have, the better reports are going to be. So we do have an idea of how we want our reports to be, like Rob mentioned. When you enter an address, you have all your information, either utility billing, to community development, to our DACRA system, whatever the case may be. Eventually, that is our goal. So by taking these small steps and doing these modules, phasing them in, we will eventually get to that master report that you're referring to. But in the meantime, yes, we are looking into reporting options. Every time we have a, just like our training this morning, we were going through our EnterGov, which is our permit software. First question that came up is, well, what does the end report look like? Of course, we don't have any live data, we have sample data, but staff is always looking at the end product of how that can be emailed, how that can be combined with other different modules to make sure we give the residents and you guys all the reporting capabilities that you want also, easily.
Okay. I think that answers the question.
Further comments or clarification requests from the council? Thank you, Melissa. Thank you, Wes Seem.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
That brings us to the fourth item here, Alderman O'Brien, dog leash discussion. Want to fill us in and bring us up to speed?
Great. Thanks, Mayor Gallo, and fellow councilmen. I know we've discussed at Hockley, just at past meetings, and then wearing my previous park district board member hat, and talking with Chief Nowacki over the last several weeks, is there's been concerns about leash laws, and even from people picking up after their pets, to leash laws, to all sorts of the board. Extremely difficult thing to enforce, rightfully so. If the police aren't around, I'm going to blow off the stop sign or speed down the street, out of sight, out of mind type thing. But over the last couple of weeks, a few residents had reached out, the letter is included in there, and Stasia has joined us tonight about that, is there was a concern about, number one, the licenses, for animal licenses, but we've talked through that, and I've talked to some other residents on that. But maybe the possibility of discussing with council of just increasing the fines is what I think the first step would be, is because we do understand it might be an iterative approach, is you don't want to go full gamut if something at a lower step of enforcement could do so. A lot of the write-up there is, thanks to Chief Nowacki and Officer Everett, there is some background data comparing raw animals to surrounding areas. And we're not way, way out of line compared to where the other municipalities are in terms of licenses. But as a first step, is just wanted to chat with the council before necessarily re-implementing the license thing, because on here, we're about half and half. Some have it, some don't, and those that do have it, it's a one-time fee. And based on some of the research that was done, there's roughly about 4,000 animals that would be in raw animals, just based on straight statistics across the United States, and only 2,000 people did register when the program was in effect. So one that I wanted to get to is the questions for discussion and the recommendation there at the bottom, is would the council be open for increasing the fines along the lines of an animal bite? Currently, it's $25. And based on some research and talking to residents, is maybe put in a tiered approach? The first one's 100, second offense is 200, and then 300 for a subsequent violation, as well as animals running at large? And I've actually had, since these materials have been posted, people have reached out to me, and as a runner, or prior runner, is that I've had some nice encounters on this, and I've talked with bike riders, other runners since they've been posted, and said, hey, we've had that as well. Fortunately, it wasn't to the extreme that Stasia had with the dogs actually being attacked and incurring vet bills, is that wanted to ask the group about, and talking with Chief Nowacki, if a combination of higher fees, as well as just focused enforcement during routine patrol, I don't think there needs to be additional patrol or anything like that, but if somebody does see there's a dog off-leash or something like that, a citation would be issued. And in talking to a handful of residents over the last couple of weeks, is we feel that word of mouth is going to travel, is that once some of the officers start writing the violations, and it is the higher fee, people are going to make sure their dog's on a leash, and then hopefully it continues through, we don't have to go back to the licensing or anything like that. So it was a toe in the water to see if there was any appetite for increasing the fees, as well as no additional burden on the police department, just through regular offenses. If they see it happening, if they see somebody speeding, they're going to pull them over. If they see somebody with a dog off-leash, just say, hey, guys, issue a citation, and hopefully word of mouth travels that the city's taking this serious.
So that it about?
Yes, sir.
Why don't we take these, you know, one bullet at a time, one bite at a time?
Yeah.
Yeah. You know, starting with the animal bite fine and adjusting the price from $25 to $100 incrementally per occurrence, does council have any comment or opinion on this, particularly Alderman Sonika?
This is about this particular issue, but I also have information, because I had a resident from Ward 7 that reached out as well, and I wanted to provide this information to the council for this point and all of the points going forward. This particular resident works with Gulf Rose, which is one of the impounding facilities where many of the dogs that are at large wind up. And this resident's particular stance on this issue is not necessarily to increase fines. And this resident broke down the actual fines that are associated with a dog at large. It's typically not someone who's not, or not a dog that's leashed, but usually a dog that will either escape or get out. So if you're opening up the door to take out the garbage in the middle of the night and the dog runs out, those are typically the types of instances where you'll have that dog at large, where the police pick up the animal and then it's impounded. At that point, it's about $117 for that dog on day one, which includes a $50 boarding fee, $15 for a flea pill, which is required upon intake, another $42 for the parbo distemper shot, which is another inoculation that's required of any dog that's boarded, and a $10 kennel tech fee. So that's on day one, and then it's an additional $50 per day after that for a week. And so the concern of this volunteer is that if we can, then the city increases the fine for at-large, or other issues with these dogs where they're taken, that it will be then a disincentive for these dogs to find owners, and they are already working very hard to decrease the rates of euthanasia for these animals. Similar, and I also wanted to clarify with the letter that was provided with tonight's packet, if the dog that bit or attacked the animals was then put into, I'm not sure necessarily what it was called for animals, but basically impounded for about 10 days to ensure that there was no rabies or anything like that? Because it sounds like from this resident that that was supposed to be the practice of any dog that attacks or bites, that it then is impounded at the owner's expense for at least 10 days to ensure that the rabies vaccination is...
You have to go back to the chief.
Yeah, I don't believe it was, and I, that, right.
Excuse me.
Take your time.
My understanding on this incident, the dog, the owner was issued a citation, the resident stated that they had tied the dog up in the backyard and it must have escaped. Obviously, nobody saw that happen, but there was a, like a leash net in the yard that was actually staked to the ground. Obviously, the dog got loose from that. When we do, when there is an animal, when there is a person bit or an animal bit, there is a citation issued, and there is an animal bite card that's filled out with the Cook County Department of Public Health with checks for rabies and that. So it'd be my understanding that would have been done. And I do understand too, I think that the resident also, in our city code and ordinance, any animal that bites another animal, a person, they are liable and responsible for all damages, medical bills, veterinarian bills. Obviously, there's also civil ramifications where civil suits can be filed. I know that's typical. I know a relative of mine, their dog bit someone, and it's, you know, tens of thousands of dollars worth of pending lawsuits going. So that is an avenue that any victim of any dog bite has. I know I was in front of the city council, I think, I don't know, maybe a year ago, talking about skunks. And I do, I do know, we average about 200 animal calls a year. I think we have about 50 straight dog reports that we respond to. And the Alderman is correctly, when we do impound a dog, there's substantial fees regarding that impound on that. There is a lower fee if a dog is just, you know, runs out of the house, you know, the owner comes out, we see it, we grab it, or we write it a citation, that's a lower fee amount. And I think that's what Alderman O'Brien is asking for those incidents, maybe to have the fine structure a little higher. Because I, it is my personal opinion that $20 for just basically a dog, you know, runs down the street, it's soon located, it's not impounded at the pound, that maybe a fine is more substantial, because I think this owner was issued a minor citation. I know they were issued a citation, though.
So my question is with adjusting the prices, I mean, do we have any data on patrol call or calls that have been answered on these dog-to-dog altercations, and whether or not they were mutually owned by individuals, and it was just gross mishandling by one or the other handler? Or is it a majority of dogs at large that caused these altercations? What do we know about?
You know, from what I, from what I know, just from my experience over the years, it's a host of reasons. It's like I said, a person opens the door, the dog runs out, dog gets through a screen door, or a window, or it is like tied up outside. And there is also some restrictions too about tying dogs up, state law about tethering the dogs, it could be very dangerous to the dog. So there's some, there's a lot of state laws. And I know our city code and our city ordinance is mirror what the state laws, because even like with deeming a dog to be vicious or dangerous, there's some very serious ramifications about euthanizing the animal, about taking, determine if a dog is vicious, has to go to the court, judge is involved in it, there's a veterinarian which examines the dog, there could be training, and like I said, it could result in euthanizing the animal, it could also result in a dog never being able to go outside without muzzled or caged. So like I said, and I think in all my years, we've only been involved in one of those incidents, so they don't happen very frequently, but there is some avenues or some recourse for those animals that are truly, you know, dangerous and vicious. And like I said, I know, like so being a dog owner myself, my dog's been, you know, attacked and stuff like that. It's horrendous, but the majority of the dog owners, even in the city, are very responsible. Because I think we do have about 4,000 to 6,000 dogs, if you just do the math, and if we have, I think, 50 straight dog calls and complaints a year, it's, I think it's less than 1%, less than even a percent. Not to say that the one individual that is attacked, I mean, that's very serious and significant to them. But overall, you know, I think most owners are very responsible, and they do, you know, care and love their pets, so they don't want anything happening to them either. And plus, like I said, the financial ramifications for when a dog is loose and does bite someone, nobody wants that, because like I said, the costs could run into the tens of thousands of dollars.
So chief, in your experience, and fines and penalties and fees, what does that do for recidivism, or for stopping second occurrence from the same animal? Do you see that fines actually prevent a secondary altercation?
Yeah, I think if your fines, it's like anything else, if the fines are significant enough, I think a person will be a little bit more responsible, or maybe take those extra precautions because of the financial burden that it might be incurred if their dog is caught loose. Like I said, there is, I know when we impound a dog, the fee structure is different because there's other costs, but a basic, you know, dog, as I mentioned earlier, just running down the street, which is soon located and returned to the owner, I could see, like I said, more significant, because $20, I don't see that deterring a lot of people. Not that I would want to pay $20, but I mean, in the scheme of things, you know, I think it could be much higher, and that might make a person a little bit more careful when they do open the door. do open the door. But like I said, I still think overall, most dog owners in the city of Rolling Meadows are very responsible.
Alderman Beniziano.
Thank you. So, when this was presented, I heard from several residents that their biggest complaint is when they're in public places like our parks, that animals are not on leashes. Not so much that, you know, even my little puppy, you know, you open the door and, you know, he runs out and, you know, he thinks it's playtime in the front yard. But it's when they're at the park and they're jogging or running, then people are not leashing their dogs. Is it typical to have a different pay or a fee scale that if your dog is not on a leash in a public place like a park, to have that fine increased?
You know, I think if we had a fee, like I said, increase, I think it should be across the board, so it's a little bit more uniform instead of having, you know, different fees for in a park, on a, you know, public way, a street, a sidewalk. I, like I said, I do believe that $20 is low and I, and I know, like I said, the dogs run a lot, there's a lot of dogs in the city of Rolling Meadows and like I said, a lot of people, you know, they want to get their dog to have some exercise and that. I mean, we could always do a better job on enforcement and we do respond to calls. If somebody sees a dog running at large or not on a leash, I mean, we will definitely respond to that. And if there is a violation, we will always issue a citation for that.
Thank you.
Alderman Sanoyka.
Thank you, Chief Nowacki. My, my concern is that when these incidents are happening at all, that the individuals who own the dogs aren't cognizant of the consequences in the first place. And so, do you have any recommendations before a fine or an incident occurs that we could implement as a city?
I mean, obviously, we always have discretion on issuing citations based on the circumstance. I mean, we, we could put information, like I said, most of all our city ordinances do mirror state law, whether or not we could post something on our Facebook and our webpage to hopefully educate the owners. But I, I do think that most owners do realize that if their dog does get out and bites someone or causes damage, in today's society where there's a lot of litigation, I think most people do realize that that's not going to end well for the dog owner who obviously attacked another dog or a person. So, I mean, we could always do more educational campaign and we could do that. But I do think a lot of the dog owners do realize that if their dog does something, it's probably going to cost them.
I agree, and I would almost equate this after talking with some of the residents in the Seventh Ward, that it's, it seems similar to people who refuse to wear a seatbelt. It's not that they don't think the seatbelt will save their life, it's that they don't think that an accident will happen. And so if individuals believe falsely that they have control over their dogs without a leash and that their dogs will listen regardless of the circumstances or the scent or the environment, I'm wondering if we would be able to mirror a campaign similar to seatbelt laws in the coming year in order to prevent these types of instances from happening in the first place.
Yeah, I mean, we could definitely do, like I said, a public education campaign, maybe at some of our special events, National Night Out, our block party, maybe get some informational brochures out and try to put that information on about being responsible dog owners. You know, like I said, we do have our Facebook page, we do have our website, we could, we could definitely do that.
So just rounding it back, I think that what you heard is, staff wise, we do like the higher numbers. And again, if you choose as a council to do the higher numbers, we'll do a campaign. But I think from the list, I think that was their first question that you had, but I think you heard from chief, the higher numbers do.
They're effective.
They are effective to a point, and the numbers that he talked about, 200, and we're taking away the skunks. So we do get dog issues, we do use some discretion at that point in time. And again, maybe part of that is reminding people about fencing and some of the other pieces. And I can tell you, with the 20 years that I've been here, we've had dogs jump over fences, we've had officers bitten, we've had, you know, part of it is you're trying to get a dog and it's going get.
Dogs open fences.
But it's all part of the education, but dogs will do anything else. They've burrowed under the fence, but no matter what, it's still that the owner needs to deal with it.
Thank you, Manager Crumstock. I just wanted to follow up that. The feedback I have gotten is that I have some residents in Ward Seven who don't walk their dogs at all. And it's not because they don't leash their dogs, but because others don't leash their dogs. And because of that reason, there are dogs where if they're approached by those that aren't leashed, it's unpredictable, so.
Is it currently a law to have your dog leashed?
Yes, so if you are out in public property or even a park, sidewalk, your dog has to be on a leash and it can't be longer than six feet. So if there, so if anybody has those issues, that is a violation and like I said, we will issue citations for those.
Well, and I think those, we should welcome those residents to make the call in their specific neighborhoods and say, I would like to walk my dog, but I can't because my neighbors are not obedient to the existing laws.
Correct.
I think it's important that we convey that message.
Yeah. And I, and I always say, I have a dog myself and like I said, there's, there's certain homes where the residents leave their dog out that roams free and like, you get to the point where you try to avoid those areas. And really, a resident who's obeying the law, following the leash law, shouldn't really have to restrict where they're going because of some irresponsible dog owner. So, like I said, here we will address those. If like I said, just call us, you know, we'll, we'll respond. And then, you know, hopefully, I said, the amount of numbers of violations are really small compared to how many owners we have of, of animals, so it might be something that we could definitely improve as we move forward.
So what's it going to cost for hosting an obedience school for the humans?
I think, I think the dogs are very receptive. I think change in human behavior might be a little bit more difficult than.
Yeah.
And like, so a lot of times, you know, just people don't call on, on these, the individuals that are irresponsible, just don't want to bother, they don't, you know, they're.
Non-confrontational.
Exactly, and that's understandable, you know, and like I said, I know definitely, like I said, in the summertime when there is more, like in the parks and stuff, you know, I will definitely pass the information on to increase enforcement, because we, like I said, we do get about 200 calls a year regarding animal violations. That's a host of everything, but dogs are definitely in that group.
Okay. Alderman Sanoyka.
This is perhaps a question for Alderman O'Brien, if he still has his old Park District hat on. Would it be possible then to give residents an alternative who really do want to have their dogs off a leash to say, there's a designated place for you to do that here in the city of Rolling Meadows? We have a dog park, and then here are the rules of the dog park at your own risk.
One of the last meetings I had before coming onto the city council and off the Park District Board is that was on their development plan, is that they were, they were actually having engineers out to look at parts of the city to, that would be conducive to a dog park. So I don't know the current status on it, but I have heard it's coming.
I ask because then if we can coordinate our campaign efforts to, for our human obedience school to be able to say, we have a dog park, the reason we have a dog park is because this is the only place in the city where you cannot have your dog leashed.
So, Alderman Cannon, go ahead.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. There is a dog park at Harper College that you could become a member of. The Palatine Park District sponsored that, I think, seven or eight years ago. And they have, I think, 150, 200 families that have, and you can take them in there and run crazy. So there is, there's available space. I guess a couple of concerns I have on the recommendations is I know we have on the last one, it's about a fence that's either traditional or electric. I can tell you from my own experience, the electric fences are great for the people who own the property because they think, oh God, I'm safe. When you're walking down the street and you have two dogs chase me like they did to me, it really scares the hell out of you, because you don't know that there's an electric fence there. And so I guess I would ask us if we're going to redo stuff, that we say that they can't have an electric fence in front and make that the only thing they can do. I don't know if we can, if we can, it's just, it's a kind of an exception, because I can tell you on the block, you know, where I live, we don't have many parks, so people walk their dogs. For good or bad, our neighborhood, my block especially, seems to be a favorite walking place. Now, we have one family who's been there with four dogs.
They've got a nice new street.
Yeah, but the thing is, they pee on your bushes and everything and they, I've actually lost a bush last summer. And it's just, it's really, because they clean up their poop, they think everything is fine. But, you know, they pee on your property and they think that that's all right. And it's just frustrating.
My neighbor put a sign in their bush that says, I don't pee on your bush, please don't pee on mine, which does help. But Alderman O'Brien, you had your hand.
Yeah, I was going to say, no, thanks for pointing that out, Alderman Cannon, is, this was kind of like a cheering approach, and I probably didn't that explain it the best in the write-up, is that we start in working with Chief Nowacki, hopefully the increased fines if it gets agreement to move forward. And then as a tiered approach, if we monitor it for a year or so, and then I, I just learned this tonight myself too, and one of this, is that our vicious dog is in collaboration with the state. It matches the state's, I don't know that we would have much leniency to change that one. And then Alderman Cannon, I did not include there, but it would be, because one of my neighbors has the electrical fence in the front, is at least properly identify, not a for sale sign, but that you have a sign, this is protected by an electric fence, because you're right, is you don't know that that dog's going to stop when it starts coming.
Yeah, and so I, what I was going to say, just to keep this moving, if we can just show, a quick show of hands from the council, for those in favor of escalating these prices, then we could move on down further into these bullet points. So, all those in favor of allowing staff to go ahead and make changes to escalate these prices from their current status up to more appropriate standard, all those in favor, please show your hands. One, two, three, four, five. So that's six out of seven, still majority on that. And then, running at large, that the same criteria stands, so I'm just going to ask for those to show their hands again, allowing for staff to go ahead and make those modifications. Those in favor for dogs at large and raising the price for the fines, those in favor, show your hand. One, two, three.
I guess I'll raise it.
Okay. One, two, three, four, two, and those opposed? One, two, three, four to three on that for this point in time. And then, the last bullet here, which was the ordinance to be modified, including dogs leashed and protected by a fence or electric fence, whether it's conventional or not, and the owner's property. You know, the electric fences, they, they're great for the homeowner's dog, but they're not good defense for a dog that enters the property. And so, again, going back to leashing and making sure that we really remain strict on, on keeping dogs leashed if we see them in the public, not public shaming, but if our police see them, that they do stop and alert them that it is a rule, it's a law, and they have to abide by those laws. Further comments on this before, I do allow the floor to be open, because we do have a resident here. Alderman Sanoyka.
I have one comment again from my residents in Ward Seven who volunteer with Gulf Rose. They mentioned that they are against electric fences, because they state that while this may keep the dog inside for a period of time, that the perimeter is, the way that the collars work is that if a dog really wants something outside of the fence, they will fight through the pain and get through it, but that pain then will also prevent them from returning, which then exacerbates the at-large issue. So I just wanted to state that for the.
Thank you. With that, if there aren't any more questions, I'm going to go ahead and open up the floor. There is a signature on here, Stacia, if you can come up. Just remember to keep your comments to five minutes at length and no derogatory comments. And the floor is yours.
Thank you. My name is Stacia, pronounced Stacia, a lot of people call me Stacy, so thank you very much for taking this. I was wanting to talk about the dog leash ordinances and thank you, Alderman O'Brien, for hearing me out. As you probably all read within the letter that I wrote, my husband and I have been residents of Rolling Meadows for 15 years, and of those 15 years, we've had dogs for 13. And we've noticed in the last, I don't know, five to seven years or so, just the increase in number of loose dogs as we're walking our dogs. We walk our dogs twice, twice every day, rain, sleet, snow, even people don't shovel their sidewalks, we're trudging through all that. But we've noticed an increase in loose dogs. And usually it's fine, we, and our, somebody mentioned about a dog being leashed aggressive, which is how our dog came to be, because we had loose dogs coming up and he gets aggressive towards other dogs. So they might say, don't worry, my dog's friendly, but my dog isn't friendly on a leash. And we know that about them, others don't know that about, about him, obviously. But we've noticed an increased number of loose dogs. And again, usually it's fine, but in the last five years or so, we've been attacked twice. And after our October attack, after my husband was walking our dogs, he was about a half mile away from our home, and as you guys probably read, the dog was in its yard and it got loose, went after my 12-year-old dog, who's a senior dog, and grasped onto his, his neck. And my husband, who's a very strong guy, could not get the dog off. And after about five minutes into this, the dog's owner finally came out and the dog released, luckily. Me and my other little dog ran off, he's scared, but luckily his instinct was to run home. I don't, I'm still flabbergasted by the fact that he even found his way home. But obviously, he was running to someplace safe. So, this is obviously a traumatic experience for all four of us. My husband and I would not even walk the dogs for weeks after that incident. And we're just, we're always on edge. It used to be, you know, way back when, we would, we would usually walk with our dogs in Rolling Meadows and, you know, thinking nothing of it until that first incident happened. And the second incident, we just, we felt like enough is enough. And so that's when we reached out to Alderman O'Brien to voice our concerns, because this isn't, it hasn't only happened to us, obviously you all know that this does happen, this happened to our neighbors across the street, and we just really want to change and some action to happen. So I'm really happy to hear, even though all four, you know, different proposals may not move forward, very happy to hear the openness to at least increasing the fines for at least the bite, you know, the bite laws. And hopefully that can move forward as, you know, as this progresses. And so, thank you very much for, for hearing our issue and hopefully some of these incidents can be reduced as we go forward. And again, I like the concept of teaching the, the dog owners maybe some manners too, so really appreciate it.
Thank you. Last thing for Manager Crumstock on this, if you can give us some insight, the council some insight on the animal license. And historically, when we had dog license, what impact did that have on city staff and operations and what should we do when exploring this notion now?
So there were two different, really departments impacted on this. Finance, obviously downstairs, taking in the license, and then PD, obviously doing. So with finance, with people coming in, and there's different kinds of dogs. So if you buy a pup, they're not going to have their rabies. And then, the requirement was still to give them a tag, so everybody has. So some good people, they weren't always trained, when they got their rabies, would come in and give it, so that information goes in. So whatever was compiled into the Excel program, and I think it was an Excel program back then, back then, was shared with PD. So if PD received a dog and had the collar and had the tag, they knew exactly who it was, could return it. So, again, at the counter, you had people coming in, people who had expired and you would have to tell them when expired. So you have the customer service where people weren't always friendly, and that's why when we talk approximately 800, 1,800 or 2,000 out of potentially 4,000 dogs, not everybody was complying. And I can tell you that there were a lot of dogs who were coming and were caught later on, running at large or something. They weren't chipped and they didn't have a tag, and so we had no way of doing it. So, no matter what, it was customer service draining downstairs, plus you're always following up. Then, when it got shipped up to PD, then what are they looking for? Sometimes people, again, complying or not, so then you have to come in. So it became very labor intensive for a very small return, if you want to call it, even for when we were using the items. And what I do like is when you do talk about later in the report about chipping, that's really what everybody uses now. And then again, I know certain people don't like chips because of what it does potentially to a dog, but at the same point in time, we don't have a reader, but we go to Gulf Rose or any of those others and they do it, and then we can return it. Majority of the dogs that are received here at City Hall, and we've actually had a few of them over there and we play nice with them. You know, we're hoping that someone comes and asks. Majority of those dogs, very quickly, an owner will say, hey, my dog's lost, and will describe the pup that we're playing with and housing. And, and then what happens is the ones who are not picked up, those are the ones that we're shipping off to Gulf Rose. We've also had some dogs that you heard before, they might be frightened by something and they're running at large. The minute they see a police car and you open up that door, or City Hall, I've done it a few times too, that we open up the door, the dog's coming into you because it's looking for that shelter. Most of those dogs, again, we just bring in here and typically, most people are picking those dogs up. But it was, again, for that 1,800 to 2,000, it was labor intensive downstairs, it was trying to follow up, even with that program for PD, it would help them for certain things, but the biggest thing was making sure. And that's why, as you can see, a lot of municipalities have gone past it, others have gone in that if you have a one-time fee, but then getting responsible individuals to come in with their new rabies certificates, making sure with the new pieces. So that's a long story of everything else, but it was, you know, for all the work that was going on and with all the pieces.
So limited value back from both municipal side and from residential side of things. I think before we even explore that, it'd be important or appropriate that council goes out to their residents in their ward that own dogs and see if that's something they're willing to participate in, or if it's not worth it due to chipping, et cetera. But I, I would like to wrap it up here with the last few questions or comments that the council has on this. Alderman Sanoyka.
This is just a question for staff. Since there's already so much paperwork and licensing that already occurs with Cook County, is it possible to have the county share this information with the city?
So typically, the county has not been forthcoming with sharing that. Obviously, the county says that they're changing, but again, with all their reports and with all their pieces, they're not always willing to say, "Rolling Meadows is this." And then, remember, we do have a section, obviously, you know, in Palatine Addresses, and when we try explaining, "These are the areas that we're looking for that are actually rolling meadows," it's like, "Well, we can't help you on that at all." So, it's one of those things, it would be great if the county was like some other counties that are a little bit better, but Cook County being so large, they're not always willing to share with them. They're very happy when they find a vicious one, and after a certain point, because that's something that they have to deal with.
Thank you.
Wonderful. Alderman O'Brien, closing.
This might be just a question, a clarification for Manager Crumstock. On the way over here, I did have an additional call that the resident saw us, they're worrying about cats as well. The way, I know we're talking leash loss, that would be applicable to dogs, because I don't see a lot of people with their cats, but we do, we see cats around as well. Since the way, if I'm understanding the ordinance correctly, that we'd be potentially modifying it regardless of animal type, and I'm looking kind of towards Chief and getting the nod, regardless of if it's a lizard bite, a snake bite, a dog bite, or if it's a hamster running down the street, it's just considered animal.
Correct.
Okay, so it would be applicable to cats as well. Okay, thank you.
So leash your hamsters?
Right.
Wonderful.
Fish.
So, I think staff has clarification, that we should go ahead and, and adjust the ordinances